I'd like to go ahead and open this regular meeting of the Yuba City City Council for March 2nd, 2021. After, read. For virtual information, the governor has declared a state of emergency to exist in California as a result of the threat of COVID-19, AKA the coronavirus. The governor also issued Executive Order N-3320, which directs Californians to follow public health directives, including canceling large gatherings. The executive order also allows local legislative bodies to hold meetings via conference calls while still meeting state transparency requirements. The public's health and well-being are the top priority for the city of Yuba City, and you are urged to take all appropriate health-safety precautions. How to participate in this virtual meeting? This meeting is utilizing the Zoom application for this live broadcast. For this meeting, we will be using the questions-and-answer functionality of this tool in order to accommodate public comment. On your device, the question-and-answer section of the app is located at the bottom of your Zoom screen. For those that would like to comment during this meeting, please enter your comment into the question-and-answers portion of the app, and be sure to state the item you will be commenting on. During the public comment of each item, staff will read aloud the comments provided by the public for all to hear for that specific item. Be timely with your questions, as once the public hearing is closed, or the item has been discussed by council and voted on, no more comments will be accepted for that item. May I have roll call, please?
Mayor Boomgarden?
Here.
Vice Mayor Shaw?
Here.
Councilmember Espendola?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Kirchner?
Here.
Thank you. Will you please rise, and we will have our invocation inspiration by the Vice Mayor, David Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I open this in prayer, I just want to share something from this past weekend as far as choices we have. And just a couple of points. Choose hope over despair. Choose gratitude over cynicism. Choose relationships over isolation. And choose sacrificial service over indifference. And those are good principles we should have. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day. We just pray that we'll take those principles and apply them to our lives as we serve this community. We just pray for wisdom and guidance in your name. Amen.
Ms. Sandy Drum, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Before we get going with the ceremonial presentations, do we have any agenda modifications? Hearing and seeing none, we'll go ahead and approve the agenda. All right. So our first order of business this evening is a proclamation to recognize the Seroptimists for 100 years. And the proclamation is going to be presented to Michelle Blake, President of the Seroptis International of Marysville, and she has a group with her, so... Sorry about that. It's gonna make it memorable, anyway. I hope I get the words right. Please welcome the Seroptimists of Marysville, Yuba City, President Michelle Blake, for this proclamation. Congratulations to Seroptis International 100th anniversary. Congratulations. Whereas in October 1921, the very first Seroptis Club was formed in California with over 80 businesses and professional women from in and around the city of Oakland. Since the founding of the first Seroptis Club in 1921, Seroptimists have been sought to bring about change in the lives of women and girls worldwide. Through its global network of five federations, over 80,000 dedicated volunteers, 3,000 clubs throughout 120 countries, Seroptimists are driven by the mission of transforming lives through education, empowerment, and enabling opportunities. Seroptis Marysville-Yuba City, chartered in 1929... Wow. That's a while ago. And Seroptis Sutter Yuba, chartered in 2017. The 100-year anniversary theme, "Bright Past, Brilliant Future," is meant to capture the respect for and memory of incredible women who had foresight and courage to become Seroptimists and pursue the best for women and girls and those who carry on the tradition today. This is the longest proclamation I've ever read. Holy moly here. The very first Seroptis project was to save the redwoods, to stop the great ancient trees from being felled. The club lobbied the state legislature, taking on powerful lumber companies, and winning public support, which resulted in a major portion of the forest set aside as protected land that still exists today. Local philanthropists, John and Maggie Nicoletti, have generously donated a redwood tree to Seroptis International of Marysville-Yuba City in honor of the first Seroptis project The members of Seroptis Club planted the tree today at Yuba City, just west of the Chambers, with the assistance of our Yuba City Parks Division. It is fitting to kick off the planting of the tree for the 100th anniversary of Seroptis International in March 2021 during Women's History Month. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mark Boomgarden, Mayor of the city of Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby congratulate the Seroptis International Organization on their 100th anniversary, and sincerely urge all residents of the city of Yuba City to join with me in recognizing this centennial event for all the contributions they have made to our community. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, very much. We enjoy what we do. We love to assist our community, and empowering women and girls is our mission. So with this honor, we duly, we thank you so much for your recognition, and as a token of our respect, we have little Seroptis pins for each of the councilmembers this evening. Thank you so much. Honorary sisters. So that will be yours. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We are now going to recognize Red Cross. So if the representatives from the Red Cross could join us up here? Are you Mr. White?
I am.
Okay. And Iris? Colburn? Okay. Okay. Please welcome Red Cross Staff Member Disaster Program Manager Darryl White and Iris?
Colburn.
Colburn. March is Red Cross Month, a special time to honor the kindness of our neighbors who aid families in the need every day in our community across the United States and around the world. Their dedication touches millions of lives each year as they carry out the organization's 140-year mission of preventing and alleviating suffering. During the trying times of the coronavirus pandemic, people have stepped up to help others in need, whether it was responding to this year's record-breaking disasters across the country, or rolling up their sleeves to give blood when our country faced a severe blood shortage. Here in the California Gold Country region, families have relied on local Red Cross volunteers for comfort and hope while coping with the recent Northern California wildfires. Over 165,000 meals and snacks were served to those in need, and 38,903 hotel rooms were provided for safe shelter. In 2020, volunteers responded to 500 home fires, helping 1,983 people address urgent needs like food, lodging, and recovery support. Red Cross hosted more than 300 regional blood drives, collecting 5,785 units of life-saving blood. Volunteers provided emergency services for 2,118 people through the service to the Armed Forces Program, and enrolled 16,329 people in first aid, CPR, and AED training to defibrillate. Now, therefore be it resolved that I, Mark Boomgarden, Mayor of the city of Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim March 2021 as Red Cross Month. I encourage all citizens to reach out and support its humanitarian mission. Mr. White, here's your proclamation. Thank you for what you do for our community, and I have, I'll pass the mic to you for a few words.
We'd just like to thank you for allowing us to serve your community and serve your city in doing the things that we do and providing the services that we provide. You may not know it, but 99% of the work that's done by the American Red Cross is done with volunteers like Iris. They do the brunt of the work and carry the load, and we're so thankful for our volunteers. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, can I put the two participants between you? So you would be right at the city of Yuba City. The mayor, there you go. There you go. There you go.
You want me in the middle? I want you in the head. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
In social blunder, we didn't bring enough, but we have one for Kirchner also.
Okay.
He disappeared.
He blends in.
Mr. Mayor, can I put the two participants between you? So you would be right at the city of Yuba City. The mayor, there you go. There you go. There you go.
You want me in the middle? I want you in the head. Thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Iris.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Got a new pin.
We will move on to, I did, I did, I noted in the proclamation from the Seroptimists, they did plant a tree today. I had, did not, was unable to attend, but I look forward to seeing, seeing where that is. So thank you, Seroptimists.
Mayor, we took a little video, so we're going to include it in our campaign.
Okay.
So you'll all get to see it.
Awesome.
It was really nice.
Okay. Item number two, COVID-19, Discussion and Action on Measures to Medicate the Impacts of the COVID-19 Coronavirus Pandemic, and presented by Mr. Dave Vaughn, our city manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, there is no updates for the COVID-19 information. We will get an update tomorrow and expect that our following meetings will have an update, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
I don't have any questions.
Thank you.
Okay. I believe, Mr. Khan, you wanted to speak on item number two?
Jason Khan, Yuba City. Not used to doing this, first time speaking. Thank you, councilmembers, for having me. Lived in Yuba City all my life, was just living life, as all of us. Didn't feel the need to speak up because life was great. Grew up here when pros ruled the land. Now places, times have changed, and I'm tired of seeing us living like sheep and falling the flock, and I'm not going to do it. And this COVID-19 has got to stop. And questions I do have, councilmembers, is, you guys did, you just kind of said you don't have answers, but answers I do have is, you did discuss vaccinations. I did want to see if you guys discussed vaccinations and their safety, and would the board consider opening up Yuba City without vaccinations? And everywhere's declining. Florida's opened, completely opened up, and cases haven't risen. And what about therapeutics? Those are my questions.
I'll go ahead, Mr. Khan, and try to answer a couple of your concerns. This is something that, that this council has dealt with since the initiation of this pandemic, or the beginning of it. Number one, as it relates to vaccinations and opening up the county, those are both under the prevalence of the county public health department. As far as rolling out vaccinations, they have become more aggressive as the vaccinations have become available, but that is something that county public health monitors and deals with. It is not a city function. As far as, as opening up the city, again, we are under state and county guidelines. We do actively educate, but we do not actively enforce in regards to certain requirements that have been set forth by the state and the county. You can go, if that doesn't address your questions, I'd be happy to...
Are you going by Dr. Lou?
Dr. Lou is the county, Sutter County's public health doctor, yes.
Is that your guys' guideline?
I would say that she, she is the person that, that makes the decisions based upon what she knows and what she gets from the state, yes. But as far as us being able to open up things, we do not have the ability to do that as a city. That's not a municipal function, at least it's not in the city of Yuba City.
Don't you guys have authority to oversee her?
No.
Yeah.
No. She's a county employee. She's not a city employee. We have no control over, over her actions. Anything else, sir?
I have item three, but I don't know if you want me to get that.
We'll go ahead, and I'll call you up when it's item three's time, but thank you for your comments. Okay. Do we have any comments from anybody else in the public? Okay. Anything from the email?
No public comment.
Okay. So item three, we do have space here for you, Mr. Khan, again?
Sorry, apologize. Three is just, I don't know if, I don't even make sense. Is comments may be limited to large groups. On controversial items, are the opinions of the group? Why are, why are comments on controversial topics? Is council asking us to select representatives to express group opinions? One person isn't fair on a representation of how many people might be feeling a certain way. It's an infringement, infringement on our rights to express grievances. Why doesn't council expect to open meetings up for the public to attend?
Having over 30 years of experience working for the city, I can tell you that we encourage the use of a spokesperson for large groups, but typically, it's been my experience, when there's, when this chambers is full and we're dealing with a lot of comments, we allow more than one person to speak on behalf of that. So it's a guideline, it's not a restriction, and I think we've been pretty consistently adhering to the opportunity to let our public speak to us.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, this is unusual to be over here. I'm Elaine Miles, and what bothers me is we're shut down so much. And the group that I belong to, you've always let us have a meeting on a Thursday, second Thursday of every month. But we haven't had those meetings for decades now. Feels like decades. But neither has the other party. Why can't you open this up and let us have our meetings here? If we have to clean it up, we'll do it, whatever it takes. But I keep asking, and it's not open, and I don't understand why.
Which group are you speaking of?
Well, I got to say it now. The Republicans?
Okay.
And the Democrats are over there. We meet on the same night. We've always done that. And sometimes we interchange with each other because there's an issue that we want to take care of. But we can't have this meeting. We can't even have this meeting at a restaurant. This stuff, to me, is getting ridiculous. And yeah, we're supposed to have shots, and I got one, and it hurt me for three days, but I had to take a second one now, and it probably won't work either. And I've been around people that have had the virus, haven't got that, but I've had seven tests for it, and that hurts me too. So please, please, open us up. Thank you.
We'll get together with staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
One last chance, Sierra. Anybody online?
No public comment.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Next item for consideration is the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time that the council votes on the motion unless members of the city council staff or public request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Would anyone from the public like to speak on these items? If so, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
No public comment.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I move consent calendar.
Second. All right. I have a motion by councilperson Espendola, and a second by the Vice Mayor to approve the consent calendar. No need for a roll call vote because we're all here tonight. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes unanimously. Business items. First up is item number seven, the 2020 Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response, also known as the SAFER Grant. It'll be presented by our Fire Chief, Jesse Alexander.
Mayor, councilmembers, thank you for this opportunity. I'm here tonight to request authorization to apply for the 2020 Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Grant, also known as the SAFER Grant. The duration of the grant is for three years. The 2020 grant has no cost share or match nor position cost limit. The grant fully covers all salary and benefits. Although the staff report states nine positions, after consultation to be more competitive in the grant process, the request now is to apply for six positions at up to a firefighter two level. The application period is from February 8th through March 12th. The awarding of the grant may start as soon as May 24th, however, it may take as long as September 30th. Is there any questions?
Any questions of, of the Fire Chief? No questions? Okay. Any public comment?
No public comment.
Okay. We'll bring it back to council for action.
I'll move the authorization of the recommendations by the chief.
I'll second. Okay. We have a motion, again by councilperson Espendola, second by councilperson Harris, authorize the fire department to submit an application to the Department of Homeland Security for consideration of funding under the state Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response, the SAFER Grant, for the hiring of nine, limited, except we've amended that to six, correct? Okay.
Correct.
Six limited-term firefighters. May, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Okay. Motion passes, so item seven has passed unanimously. All right. We're going to move on to item number eight, the purchase of five police traffic motorcycles and a related buyback agreement. This will be presented by our Police Traffic Sergeant, Dennis Hauck. Welcome, Mr. Hauck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a thing on now, yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council, good evening. I'm here to talk to you tonight about entering into a buyback agreement with Harley-Davidson of Yuba City to purchase five new police traffic enforcement motorcycles and to sell back the current fleet of four motorcycles that we currently have. In 2003, the city entered into its first buyback agreement with Yuba City Harley-Davidson. Motorcycles continue to be an asset for the police department for use in traffic enforcement and for response to collisions. The police department worked closely with finance and fleet maintenance staff researching the, this proposal. $125,000 was budgeted for these vehicle replacements in the current budget. We were able to save the city some funds by utilizing some of the existing emergency equipment from the motorcycles that are currently in our fleet to bring the price down to a proposal of $108,787 from the Vehicle Replacement Fund. So it is our recommendation that we adopt a resolution to authorize the purchase of five new Harley-Davidson FLHTPs to Harley-Davidson of Yuba City in the amount of $108,787, finding that it's in the best interest of the city, and approval of the related buyback agreement.
All right. Thank you, Sergeant. Any questions for the council before we take public comment? Seeing and hearing none? Any, any questions from the public?
No public comment.
All right. Bring it back to the council for comments or action?
I'd like to make a motion to purchase the fire motorcycles.
Okay. Have a motion?
I'll second the adoption of the resolution to authorize the purchase of the five Harley-Davidsons FLHTP... Gosh, did I get those? Yeah. How do you pronounce that? Or...
You just...
...Harley-Davidsons Yuba City, the amount of $108,787.21, by finding that it's in the best interest of the city, and approval of the related buyback agreements as presented. Thank you for doing that.
All right. I have a motion by councilperson Kirchner, and a second by councilperson Espendola. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none? Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Thank you. Moving on to item number nine, which is mid-year capital acquisition requests, presented by Diana Langley, our Public Works Director.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I have before you tonight several mid-year capital acquisitions. The first one is the Town Center Fountain Pump. The main pump was original to the construction of the Town Square Fountain in 1996. It was rebuilt approximately 10 years ago, and so we have two options. We could rebuild the pump at a cost of about $3,000 plus labor, and would have a service life of five to 10 years, or we can replace the pump at the amount of $6,398.66 with a service life of 15 to 20 years. Staff is recommending to replace the pump. We're requesting the purchase of 10 HAWK turbidometers. The water treatment plant is regulatorily required to monitor turbidity, and the current turbidometers are starting to fail, and you cannot find replacement parts, purchase replacement parts. We also have our instruments standardized at the water treatment plant with HAWK products, and so we are recommending that we basically sole-source two HAWK for the purchase of these 10 turbidometers. The city's wastewater discharge permit at the wastewater treatment facility requires that staff collect samples from the Feather River at three locations. The current inflatable boat was purchased in 2000... The current inflatable boat was purchased in 2012 and has developed unrepairable leaks. Staff recommends the purchase of an aluminum alloy boat that will not be subject to puncture issues. And the existing outboard motor and associated hardware will be utilized on the new boat. Lift station number two, which is a sewer lift station, assists with the transport of a large volume of raw sewage through the sewer collection system. There's currently three existing Wimco submersible pump motors that have been in operation since 1992 and need replacement due to significant corrosion. If you see these pumps, the cords are duct taped to try to mitigate the intrusion of liquid into the wiring, but we're having issues. And so staff recommends the purchase of three new Wimco pump motors. I just want to note that Mun equip LLC is the authorized vendor in the area for Wimco products. And then Wico Industries CCTV equipment. So the sewer collection crew inspects the sewer collection system using a CCTV truck equipped with cameras and transporters. And so we need to replace the large transporter, which is to the left here. We need to replace the compact pipe ranger, which is a smaller diameter transporter, and then also the camera assembly. So you can see that this camera fits on both of these transporters. And basically, you just steer this down the sewer pipeline to do a visual inspection of the sewer pipeline. So the total fiscal impact of all of these purchases is $195,024.18. The Town Center Fountain Pump. So we have... We're requesting to utilize a CIP account, which is for improvements to buildings and grounds. The account currently has a negative balance due to labor costs for other projects. And so even though the actual pump is roughly $6,400, we're requesting a larger supplemental appropriation to take care of the negative balance in that account and then also provide a little bit more funds as staff needs to work here and there on various projects related to buildings and grounds. The HAWK turbidometers, roughly just under $32,000, we're requesting a supplemental appropriation from an allocated water funds into this account. For the boat and trailer, there's more than sufficient money in the Vehicle Replacement Fund for this boat and trailer. The Wimco pump motors, we are going to be utilizing a CIP account for lift station improvements. And then the Wico Industries CCTV equipment, we're requesting a supplemental appropriation from an allocated wastewater fund. With that, there's a long list of recommendations, almost a full page of your staff report. I have them noted up here. But with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Langley. Any questions from the council? Okay. Seeing none. I do have a public comment card on item number nine, and that's Mr. Conigan.
Yeah, thank you. After seeing your explanation, because there was an explanation on here, but after going over your numbers and what the numbers you've written here don't coincide, and I don't know if that's just a misprint, like if you totaled up B, C, D, E, F, and G comes up to 321, I don't know where you got the 195. So is there just a double... Something doubled up there? Or I don't understand. You've got $20,000 on B, $31,000 on C, 87 on D, 31 on E, 64 on F, and 87 on G.
So C and E are the same thing?
Okay.
One is because we're requesting a supplemental appropriation. The other is because we're requesting a sole source purchase to HAWK. And so it requires two different recommendations, but the dollar amount's the same. And then related to the G as well, that we have the request for supplemental appropriation of the $87,000. And again, that's a sole source to Wico Industries. So it's how we have to list it in terms of council approval. So you have to list it as two separate items if it's a sole source versus a supplemental appropriation. So it's really more of a budget thing and as well as a purchasing policy requirement.
Okay. So that's...
Yeah.
It's still 195, not 321?
It is.
Okay. I just want to make sure that's just a... 321's a steep price, even 195, but seeing the information you got, because I do work in the construction industry and I know stuff like that needs to be replaced. I do feel a little bit better the way you explained it, but 321's a little steep. But I do still see if we can maybe tackle those a little at a time instead of all at once. Thank you.
Thank you. Sierra, any public comment? None? Okay. Hi, Ms. Alfick. Yes?
Hi there. I just had one question. What are the guarantees on these pieces of equipment?
It depends from piece of equipment to piece of equipment. I don't have the warranty information right here in front of me, but I'd be happy to follow up with you and I can send you that information.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
What's the urgency on the CCTV?
Can you go... Excuse me, Mr. Con. Because this is recorded, would you mind, please, going to the podium? Thank you.
Pardon me. What's the urgency on the CCTV since our building industry is down a little bit and we're not building as much?
So the CCTV truck is utilized...
I know what it's used for. I just want to...
I'm explaining to the rest of the public, please. Thank you. The CCTV truck is utilized to inspect our sewer collection system. We have just around 200 miles of pipeline that we inspect. We try to inspect the entire system within about a three-year timeframe. And so we have a crew that's dedicated pretty much to just TVing the sewer collection system. And so when we have a transporter down or a camera that's down that impacts our ability to do our jobs. And it's also, we have our SSMP, which is our sanitary sewer management plan that we submit to the state, in which we state that we're going to inspect the sewer collection system. And so we are trying to comply with the requirements that we have with the state as well. And so the necessity of purchasing this equipment is so that we can continue to do so.
And that's our system that's already in, not new systems?
Correct. For new systems, the developers are required to do the initial TV inspection.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question to ask. When I added the three issues up, it does not come out to the 195. Please tell me the difference.
So there's actually five different things that we're purchasing. We have the pump, the Town Center Fountain Pump, the HAWK turbidometers, the boat and trailer, the Wimco pump motors, and the Wico Industries item. And so those are listed on the fiscal impact of the staff report. So even though the recommendations, you have some that require supplemental appropriation, some that require a sole source, really the summary of the fiscal impact's the best location to get the cost of all of the pieces of equipment. And they do total 195, 2418.
But that's somewhere other than this recommendation for the meeting. Thank you.
Yeah, it's in the staff report.
Yeah, it would be in the staff report, Ms. Miles. Which is available for public. Okay. Still nothing, Sierra.
No further comment.
All right. We'll bring it back to the council. Questions, comments, concerns, a motion?
I move to approve.
Second.
Mr. City Attorney. We're okay with that? Okay. All right. We have a motion to approve in a second. May... All those in favor, I keep wanting to call for roll call habits. All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. Item number 10, appointments to the Yuba City Planning Commission. Myself and the vice mayor interviewed a very talented group of individuals who showed a desire of being on our planning commission. The procedure for that is an application process with written questions that are provided and then an interview process with myself and the vice mayor. From that, we make a recommendation to the council of the three folks that we believe would best serve in those positions for the city. They're four-year terms, which would begin almost immediately. And so for this evening, we are recommending, the vice mayor and myself, recommending Jackie Solman, Stacy Brookman, and Bob and Dale for your consideration. Be happy to answer any questions. Also would provide the vice mayor an opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Great group. Glad that you all participated. The ones that weren't selected, I look forward to them getting involved in other areas. You had mentioned about the Business Outreach Task Force. That is one area that we can continue on in, but I'm looking forward to the work of the planning commission and think we've got some good choices.
So before we see comments from the public, any questions from the council?
Through the mayor, are all the candidates here?
I don't know if they're watching or whether they're...
Just to make sure. I know Jackie, obviously.
Yeah.
Or Stacy's online, perhaps. Okay.
Any questions from the public?
No public comment.
All right. Bring it back to council for action.
Through the mayor, I move to approve the appointments to the planning commission.
Second.
Have a motion by the vice mayor, a second by councilperson Kirchner. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, we will appoint Jackie Solman, Stacy Brookman, and Bob and Dale to our planning commission. Welcome aboard. Item number 11.
Mayor, before you go on, so will they have the opportunity to be trained like the other commissioners on the Brown Act and all those other trainings that we've done in the past?
That's affirmative, yes.
Okay. Just wanted to confirm that.
There's definitely an onboarding process.
Thank you.
Item 11, Yuba City's 12th Growth Policies, Resolution 05-049, be presented by our Development Services Director, Ben Moody.
All right. So good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So the item before you tonight is really in regards to considering the update of the city's 2005 12 growth policies. And so there's some history to the growth policies. At a high level, is back in 2004, the city had a comprehensive update to the general plan. And with that, there was strong developer interest in growth. There was rapid population growth happening in the city. And with that new general plan implementation, there was workshops that were conducted to establish these growth policies that were put in place, to put a check on growth, to make sure they were implementing the infrastructure, paying their way, and going in a orderly manner. And so since 2005, a lot of times, a lot of time has passed. We've had the Great Recession and we've struggled with growth for the last decade. Really, we've been, on average, maybe 30 homes, 30 to 50 homes, single-family homes a year for the last decade plus. And so with this, when looking back in December 2019, the council had a special workshop to look at development. And there was a high-level review of the impact fees and then also of the growth policies at that time. Out of that meeting came the Development Impact Fee Ad Hoc Committee that specifically worked over the last year, that specifically looked at development impact fees. But out of that, there was a lot of information that came out regarding hurdles for development, what's causing this, what's keeping the city from jump-starting like a lot of the other areas around the region. And so out of that, there was some relevancy of the growth policies. And then also at our workshop, there was information that came out that said, are they really relevant anymore? Are we duplicating efforts that now that 12, that 16-plus years have passed? Am I doing my math right? I'm worried about my math right now. Are they still relevant? Do we have new master plans? Do we have new water and infrastructure studies that really supersede these? Are they really a benefit or are they a hindrance? And so with that, there's a quick snapshot of the different policies there at a high level with this. There's policies regarding the school Melrose fee, affordable housing, drainage, development agreements, residential design, sewer and water fees, annexation, roadways, impact fees, levy fee, community facilities, district requirement, community design, and city services outside the sphere. And so... And then back in 2005, there was a map where we called out these areas of growth that would require a specific plan or master plan to help guide and control that growth. And since that time, you could see now, even with this map, it doesn't include the Boggs Sewer Master Plan area that we recently adopted. And so it's time for an update, in staff's opinion. And with that, the mayor recently, at the last February 16th meeting, also requested that the council consider an update and review for that. And so the item before you really is... I have, I could go into details, and we're happy to go into each one, showing some of the issues from the affordable housing policies, what's changed since 2005 and what Secog region and new Rena numbers and our new housing element updates, drainage policies where we've done new drainage master plan studies with the county and they've implemented guiding policies. So it goes on and on about development agreements, is whether that is applicable to state law and at what level it's required. And so it's really time that we get into the weeds with these growth policies and find out how to bring them up to relevancy or cut the ones out that we don't need. And so with that tonight, I'm looking for action to move forward on how to initiate that change. And so I really have three options, but you know, all options are on the table if there's other ideas. And that's really give staff the go-ahead to work on them internally, that we come back, you know, if you provide us some guidance, we'll come back with our recommendations. We use an existing ad hoc committee, the Development Impact Fee Ad Hoc Committee that's existing. We could add to their scope. Or we create a new ad hoc committee that provides a mechanism where you could really have these meetings and get into the weeds on some of these items. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Moody, and thanks for the report. The reality of why these growth policies are important to the city of Yuba City is because, as Mr. Moody mentioned, these were last reviewed in 2005 and there has been a lot of changes since 2005. A lot of these questions have been raised through the Development Impact Fee Committee, Ad Hoc Committee that the vice mayor and I have been sitting on. So this isn't just a compilation of ideas from the vice mayor and myself. It's actually a group request. The ad hoc committee, in addition to vice mayor and myself, has representatives from builders, developers, real estate, finance, anything that has to do with commercial and residential growth. And so the idea here is to take a look. I'll tell you what my option is, but I'd prefer to let the council go ahead and have any questions or comments that they may, that you may address directly to them.
Through the mayor? Ben, I just had a quick question. You said expand the scope of the existing ad hoc. What does that mean?
So when the Development Impact Fee Ad Hoc Committee was established, it was established by resolution and was limited to a term for one year, and there was specific scope in there that looked at impact fees through that resolution. And so the city attorney, I'm sure, could expand on this. But my understanding is currently the review and recommendation regarding the growth policies was not in that original scope.
Is that the answer?
Thank you.
Okay. So how was the, through the mayor, how was the original growth policies developed in 2005 or actually, what, 2004, maybe?
So...
Process.
From, so I started with the city in 2006. In 2000, it looks from the records that early 2005, there was workshops. So there must have been some stuff in the works in 2004, for sure, that... But the, in, I think it was in January and February of 2005, they went to the planning commission and then brought it back to the council in February of 2005 to adopt the growth policies. And so there was two study sessions, basically, where they worked through these study sessions at the planning commission level and then brought it to the city council for approval.
Okay. So you're proposing either one is have the city or staff or executive team work on it, two... two, a resolution, a new resolution would need to be added to expand the existing development impact fees committee or ad hoc, because it's very focused, the resolution that we... Or we could do something of a hybrid of those things, you know, workshops, allow the community to really have a discussion in that. I mean, when we're talking about 12 growth policies, I think, you know, the ad hoc committee has so much already with the impact development fees, and that process has taken over a year, and not because of by choice, gentlemen, I really understand that. I just think that it would be really an opportunity for the whole Council and maybe set up some workshops and allow the community to contribute in the conversation before maybe it goes to the ad hoc or vice versa. Something needs to be a little different than just go to an ad hoc, and the ad hoc with a small group decides 12 growth policies that probably would direct us for another 10 years. And I think that's very limited voice opportunity. I think it needs to be expanded.
Through the mayor. As part of the ad hoc committee and seeing how this all interrelates and winds through, you know, Councilwoman, you're correct as far as expanding, but I see a different path getting there, because it really needs to start with the staff, because you have all the legal changes that has come about in the last 16 years. We need to get that all basically fixed. Then I would see it potentially running through the ad hoc committee to get a little bit more refined input there from all the people that we have setting on that that relate to basically every facet of development, because we've got from builders to lenders to real estate agents to the Council. And then out of that, take those ideas, and then by all means, let's open it up to the public and get some public input. But we have to do our homework first and our cleanup first, not reverse that. And, you know, as we know, anything that comes out of the ad hoc, anything that comes out of a workshop has to come before all five of us anyway. So we, we walk it through the natural progression, get the legal side cleaned up, work it through a small group discussion that has that focus on that area, and then bring all of that out to the public and have a bigger discussion.
I don't disagree with you on that, because talking to, you know, developers and individuals that want to, to expand or retain businesses, there's been multiple changes in the laws. In particular, when we're talking about levies or we're talking about floods, and, but there's 12 different items, and 12 items, in my point of view, do not all tie into developmental impact fees. They don't all tie into that. So there's growth policies that are outside of that, of the, you know, there might be guessing, I'm making a wild guess, there may be six, maybe, of those 12 that might be really good tie-ins to the committee that you and the mayor are part of right now. I think it's, it's good to look at all the legal pieces, clean that up, and then maybe bring it back to the Council for review, make sure that we understand what those changes are in the policy. And then we can relook at it again to not have to drag it out for a year or two years, because it's taken, you know, it takes time, and we can, we can really probably move this along quicker, in particular as we develop our priorities that we're going to be relooking at here in the near future. And I think all of that really complements and ties into each other, the priorities of where we're heading as a city, all of us together, these growth policies, how are we going to grow, perhaps maybe in the next five, 10, 15 years? And then the existing developmental impact fees that are currently going to impact any particular type of development, residential, commercial, what have you.
I will add a couple of things that I think are of importance. Number one is there is a heightened level of interest in both commercial and residential real estate going on right now. And as Mr. Moody threw up on the screen, that didn't sound right.
I slowed it down.
Sometimes I amaze myself. As Mr. Moody presented up on the screen, you know, there's specific plans and master plans that were developed years ago, and those may or may not be appropriate right now. And there are people that want to do things in those specific planned, master planned areas. And in fact, we have one, one or two of those on the docket right now. As it relates to some of the growth policies, I'll mention two that are of concern right now. One is the, we have a policy that involves Melrose for the schools. That's really not, that may not be something that is really under the city's umbrella, if you will. So we need to talk with the school district about that, to talk about opening up and talking with our partners. Same thing with the levy assessments. You know, we're already in a position where all those of us who live in the city are paying taxes for the Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency, but we're also asking people that move in here to pay a levy impact fee. So we need to have conversation with the Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency over, over that fee right now. The actions that the City Council has taken to reduce development impact fees has definitely increased interest in development within the city, which is, I think, vitally important right now. But it's a balancing, and I'm speaking from a former fire chief position, it's balancing the need for revenue to provide essential services with the growth that needs to come in to continue to provide the revenue for those services. So I think that, that, to add to your comments, Councilwoman, I think that it's important for us to move in a relatively rapid fashion here, not, not in an effort to exclude anybody from participating, but we have, we have interest right now, and we have things that are, are impeding the ability for these builders, developers, commercial, residential folks for moving forward, that I think if we shine a light on, we'd say, whoa, that doesn't make sense anymore. So my opinion is similar to yours and similar to the Vice Mayor's, which is, let's let staff go in and crunch what the legal things are, bring that back, and then we can open up for, you know, a more participative view by those who are going to be impacted by this.
And I really like that direction, Mayor. And I was gonna, in my time of sharing later into the meeting, I did have a meeting today with Michael Baset, which the majority of us on the Council know. Michael, he's the Executive Director, Sutter Buttes Flood Control. And so the Chair, Kimmel Schuh, and I, as the Vice Chair, met with him today to talk about what is it that Sutter Buttes, and in particular, the impact fees, because he mentioned the conversation that both of you've had, and in meeting all the requirements as Brown Act rules, we can talk about it here, because we're all here together. So bless you, whoever sneezed there. So that he is going to contact, I asked him to, he was going to contact Ben Moody, because there's some information about where those results of those numbers may look like for the levy assessment fees within our jurisdiction. So he's going to contact Ben on that. And there's particular, another issue of a JPA that may be, is in the process, where I think a conversation with Diana and Michael needs to happen. So that'll be happening shortly here. I think by the end of the week, he was going to reach out to both of them. So that's going to tie back into that impact fees that would help determine, you know, how's, how are these growth policies? And the other thing of that is, in the growth policy, we're going to have the 200-year plan certification happening here very shortly in the near future, which is a requirement in order for us to have growth or development in the city, and that's happening here in the near future. So I really support what you're saying. If we can do that, I'm with you on that.
Back through the mayor?
Yes.
If I may, sir. I just want to kind of bring back clarification on that ad hoc committee, because when we started this work, we never intended the full work of the ad hoc committee to be done in six months, but the work that was done between the ad hoc committee and this Council was remarkable, because we appointed it in January, and I believe by April, we had the recommendation back, and that started things moving last year. So that was just past one. And to your point with Sabufka and stuff, these are questions that's already been raised and asked, because they don't just represent Yuba City, and, you know, what other jurisdictions are paying levy impact fees, because there's considerable growth going on north of us. And through those, we found out that there was not impact fees being paid to the north, but yet our residents here were basically carrying the lion's share. To the point of the levies, our levies are good. You know, the levies that they're talking about are to the west that don't impact Yuba City. At a bare, at a far stretch, it was a bare minor portion of the southern-west corner of the city. So our levies here are in good shape. So, you know, the questions the ad hoc committee's been asking is, at what point have we done our due diligence with the impact fees and the levy impact fees, so that we can, everybody's paying their fair share, and we've got the levies like we need? So, so these are the questions we've been asking for quite some time. So I just want to make sure that, you know, the community is aware that these are things the ad hoc committee started tackling a year ago. The Council did a great job last April. Growth is going, and whatever that path is, we need to continue to move at that pace, because it doesn't need to take us a year, and I don't think it will. So we're all down the same path.
Through the mayor, just let me clarify, Vice Mayor, I don't want, I don't want you to have the wrong impression that Michael didn't mention that those conversations occurred from you, with you and the mayor. He was very clear about that, that there had been some movement in that and discussion. What I'm just saying is, in just of a conversation this morning, this is what has happened since this morning, and those impact fees and the levy assessments, and he has numbers, and part of that, my support of your, what your direction is as well, supporting that as a city, we understand that we are carrying a larger portion. And the Chair, who I'm working with, is from Buick County, so, you know, understanding the north of what's going on. He and I work very closely and really well, Supervisor Kimmel Schuh, so there, we were just, he was on the same path as I was, on the same direction. So I just wanted to clarify, he wasn't making any statements that he wasn't trying to help or resolve the issue, okay?
No, we're good. We're just going to let you know, we're all on the same path. We've been asking for quite a while, so, anyway, Mr. Mayor, back to you.
The only thing I would say is, I think that, I'd want to get two things going here that look like they're in two parallel or two different paths. The impact fees are under the current prevalence of the current ad hoc committee. The growth policies is a separate issue in regards to that. So as it relates to meetings with, with impact fees currently in effect, I do believe that that still resides with the ad hoc committee. With full transparency to the rest of the Council, should something come up that we need to change. Same thing with the school fees, but some of the planning and some of the other growth policies, which is really what I think staff needs to take a look at. With the bottom line for me, anyway, and the reason I raised it last meeting, was we have to make sure that if we're going to charge people, developers, our own people, et cetera, that it's going, it's reasonable, it's consistent, and it ties into the city of Yuba City. I mean, and that, those are really driving forces for me. And I think that since 2005 is way too long. We should have been taking a look at this years ago, especially as things have changed. So I told you I would share my, my concept. I think it's in alignment with, with yours, Councilwoman, and yours, Vice Mayor, and I believe it's, it's option one, Mr. Moody. The action is to provide direction to the staff as how to proceed with reviewing, updating the city's growth policies. Have we given you enough info?
I'm counting three. So, yeah.
I see, I see five heads nodding.
Five heads nodding. All right. Thank you.
Through the mayor.
Okay.
Through the mayor. Prior to us taking official action, would you like to give the public an opportunity to speak on this?
I would love to give the public an opportunity to weigh in on this. Sierra, do we have any public comment?
No public comment.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Elphick.
Mr. Mayor, number one, the Melrose, the school district, that's totally separate from the city. They don't, the city doesn't have any authority over that.
Exactly, and that's why we want to take, we want to consider perhaps removing that from our growth policies. Yeah.
And second, the development impact fees, and you have a bad heart committee on that. We do have professionals come in and do an evaluation of the costs that's costing the city to have development, but that's not how it's done. You get the nexus.
Right. It's an AB 1600 study, and I believe we've got that, a portion of that underway.
Yes. So the traffic impact fees are underway, and there's been an issue, a review regarding some of the other components.
Is it just the traffic impact fees?
And so there's currently ongoing, there's traffic, the levy, and, you know, basically a full review is in the process to be updated.
Because that's what should, should guide you, because I was talking with Mr. Moody, and on this one development, your impact fees for this particular development that's ongoing is $15,000 per unit. And I know that the impact fees have to be somewhere between 35,000 and 50,000, if you take in consideration the levies. So every time you let a house be built or developer come in, and you make your impact fees less than what it really costs you, the rest of the community pays that bill. It cannot survive for longer than maybe, I did simple math on it, I figured about 10 years, and you could easily go broke if you did extensive development and not do full impact fees. That's very, very important. The other thing is, in doing your points of growth, you need to take into consideration the people that pay the taxes around here, not just developers, real estate people, people who make a profit off of the community. It has to be also the people that pay the bills. Thank you.
Thank you. I can, I can assure you that this is a problem that has many layers, including bringing housing in, making it affordable to bring housing in, because we also hear from the folks that come to us that don't have a house to live here in Yuba City. So it's a, it's a balance that we're trying to strike, and that's the reason why we're going to begin to review all this.
And those are your low-income homes, but when you charge your developer less than what it's costing you, pretty simple. Who's paying the bill? It's going to be the community.
Thank you.
My name's Mike Smith. Is this on?
Yes, sir.
Just a question. How do you get on the ad hoc committee or whatever it is? I mean, it's all developers, and it's all, all people that are wanting to make a profit on the city or whatever, and as far as a citizen, you know, I think that voice needs to be heard also on that committee.
We would take that under advisement. I think that's not a bad thing. The people that we chose to be on the ad hoc committee, I, I believe they are fair-minded individuals who are not just looking to make a buck. They represent our community as well. They live here, they work here, they have families here, but I think we can consider a public member.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm assuming you'd be interested.
I got a few volunteers.
I think it's also fair, and I know the whole process of, especially when it comes to city growth, there are a lot of layers of things that have to go through, including specific plans or master plans, impact fees. If we're actually growing the city, it's got to go through LAFCO, which has municipal service reviews and the ability to serve. So I don't want, I would hope that people aren't thinking, oh my goodness, Yuba City's just opening the door and everybody can rush in. I know what happened last... I know what happened last time we did that. I was here. So, okay. I, any comments from the public? Thank you, Mr. Moody. Sorry about that.
No public comment.
Okay. Future agenda items. This is the opportunity to discuss with the city manager about items that came up in the meeting this evening that we'd like to have brought back to the council at a later date. Are there any other comments relating to agenda items that may have come in during the meeting?
No public comment.
Okay.
Through the mayor. I'm so sorry. Two quick items. Just to confirm, for item number 11, there was a consensus by five council members as to option one for the staff update.
I saw five heads nodding. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you so much. And just while I have the microphone, I did want to report there was no reportable action taken in closed session last night.
Thank you for covering for me yet again. All right. Reports and communications. We'll go with city council reports, and we'll start off this evening with Councilmember Esmondola.
Thank you, Mayor. It's always nice to have you, have you here with us. And Mr., I love sitting next to Councilman Harris. He's, I love hanging out with my friend over here on the side. So, nothing to report on the homeless situation, but I think we have some potential things that may be coming up here in the near future. Feather River, I'm part of the Feather River Air Quality Management District now. And I'm on a very steep learning curve on that particular board, but it was a very good board meeting. They cover local air quality, which they authorize construction and permits, permits specifically with opening, burning, ag diesel equipment and registration. They have several grants that they give out in the community, and one that we reviewed was from the Blue Sky Program, which I didn't realize that the Feather River Air Quality Management District did. And we funded $330,000 to Wheatland School District to replace a school bus from 1997 to a 1999 bus. And I also learned that other school districts in the Sutter-Yuba area have benefited from this particular fund and grants and been able to provide for our school district, which I thought was really neat. Previously working in a school district, no longer doing my own work here now. So in addition, I was appointed by our new Board Chair, Fletcher, Vice Chair, Gag, and the Policy and Finance Committee. So I'll be joining that committee as well for the Feather River Air Quality. Then this week, it's been a busy week, or two weeks, Norah Sacramento Valley Integrated Regional Water Management Group. We had a lengthy discussion about groundwater and the sustainability of groundwater and management. It's a critical issue because not knowing what the impacts of droughts or the change in weather, one statement was made, if anybody in the board or the group was able to predict the weather, you could really make yourself a good chunk of money because it's so unpredictable. But in the sense of water, it's a real, it impacts growth. It's vital in the economy of California and environmental sustainability. So, long discussion, but really good meeting. We have a couple of grants that we've gotten for the Gilzeiser Drainage there to help take care of some of the drainage in our city. And our next meeting will not be until August 2nd. My next meeting with the Regional Water Authority is going to be later this week, and I already reported about the Sutter-Beet flood control. What, just to reemphasize on the Sutter-Beet flood control, a huge work that has been done since 2005 has been working on strengthening our levies on the west side of our city from northern Buick County all the way south to Yolo County. And it's a stretch about 35 miles of this work that's been done for over 20 years. So Michael, I think, is going to reach out and talk with our new city manager, set up an appointment, and he's reaching out to do presentations. But this 200-year flood protection certificate is a really important one for our community, more than I even knew about, to be honest, how, how important it is in development, insurance, safety, people and property. The, the breakage that occurred in the 1955, this Shanghai Bend area, it was, that's where the development of, of the, or the actual levy repair began. And so it's done a tremendous work from Sutter Buttes. Some of it has been done by the Army Corp, and, which is about, I think, another seven-mile stretch. There's a few little pieces left down on the south. But the total bill on this is about almost $340 million and more. But our levies are safe at this point, so we'll know more about that later. I wanted to share one thing that I'm, it's more on a lighter note, but also an important note, because I want to say thank you first to our mayor. Because when I had the discussion about celebrating women and celebrating Women's History Month, it was an idea to include all the women in our city of Yuba City who work for our city. And the mayor's always been extremely open and supportive to those kinds of ideas. And so the word that he and I always talk about is, how do we make this equitable? And how do we include as many people as we can? So I want to say thank you for, for really being a support in that. And the same thing for Dave. I know you just started, but your support in this is really important. And you said, hey, how do we get everyone involved and encourage the message? The whole, the idea of Women's History Month is to really celebrate women. The challenges that us women face are beyond measure sometimes. And I love wearing this mask because it talks about women belong in all places where decisions are being made. And oftentimes, those are not easy steps to take forward as a woman, in particular even politics or in non-traditional jobs. And so I've seen how, how women have so much, an undeniable strength and a perspective that is really valued in the workplace. And I've seen how much they do so much for us here in our city. And, and so that's why we started this campaign. It was really less about the aspect of, oh, hear me roar. But I think mostly, it's just hear me and see me. I believe that so many times, women are not heard all the way through and not seen. And it's not because we choose to be in that position, it just sometimes happens to be placed in that position. And so I thought it was really important, in particular COVID this last year, I've heard from so many women in our community, how hard it's been, the hardships, the struggles, and the opportunity to really bring light and energy and, and really share this message across our community, bring a little bit of sunshine in the aspect of the work that we do. And this could not have been done without Sierra Wakefield, who's back here. She's really the, the master person behind all the campaign. Katie Goodman from the Community Policing, coordinating from the Police Department. Kristy Davis from the Customer Services Representative from Finance. They, our women in our city were able to capture all these ideas and put it together in a matter of about a day, two days and a half. And so the challenge was put out. I asked, I contacted Yuba and Sutter County Supervisors and, and asked them to join in and share, highlight, and who are your women in your county working for you or working with you? And the cities, Marizville and Livock, I invited them to, to a friendly challenge in the sense that I think that the more that we just, as I started to say, that as we all work together, the opportunities are always going to be better. You know, this month is, is a month to be able to celebrate and to really recognize all the women that work for the city of Yuba City. And I'm extremely, extremely proud to be, be here, to be able to voice those things for them and with them. And I will continue to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Councilmember Harris.
All right. Real quick on, on the boards and commissions here, the Regional Housing Authority had a board meeting. We talked about occupancy and waitlist reports, a lot of basic business things going on. There's a new voucher for foster youth, for kids who were formerly in foster care, but they've aged out of the system, so they're going to be getting vouchers for some housing. They are 75% complete with a rehab of 17 units at Richland Housing Center. They took a tour down there, they're looking really good. And of course, New Haven, right there in the corner of Percy, it's not Percy, across the street. But anyway, near Percy and Garden, New Haven is scheduled, still scheduled for completion on May 17th. SECOG, lots of meetings for that, a lot of moving parts in that organization, a lot of programs, a lot of progress, a lot of planning, a lot of administration things. However, the one, action item we had, our meeting within the last two weeks was we approved the 2021, excuse me, yeah, 2021 to 2024 Metropolitan Transportation Improvement Program Amendment, which is basically something that's required by the state every two years to update the status of pre-approved, new, completed, and revised projects as a way to maintain qualification, remain, maintain qualification for federal funds. It affects more than 500 transportation projects in our region, and also serves as a revision to our Metropolitan Transportation Plan, Sustainable Community Strategy, finally known as the MTPSCS. So again, like I said, mostly administrative in nature, but it does still serve to ensure that we properly document publicly, the information that is publicly available is the most up-to-date. We also had a workshop at the time led by Dr. Stephen Mandenian regarding a housing poli, regarding housing policy and racial inequality. So there's an intersection between those two things, and it discussed the applicability and application of policy within that, regarding land use, residential segregation, and racial inequality. It was pretty interesting to hear some of the things and some of the concepts he came up with that explained, some of the barriers that are rather innocuous at the beginning, but the trickle-down effect, unintentional, at least hopefully, reduces opportunities for, for some folks. And so SECOG is putting light on that issue, historical problem, and trying to do the best that we can to change policy and direction to make it right, or at least more fair. Let's see here, Transit Authority. Big topic, of course, is the new facility. They had several potential sites laid out. They narrowed it down to three, appointed an ad hoc committee to get together and do a deeper dive into all the concepts and all the criteria of what a, a proper site and location would look like and where it would be. We did meet Monday, which would be yesterday, and made a recommendation, or excuse me, made a decision on a recommendation which will be presented to the board at our next meeting. The next scheduled meeting has been canceled, so it'll be after that. And then finally, Yuba Sutter Arts and Culture Board Meeting. Many programs are still continuing. They've done, and I said this before, they, they've done a really, really good job maintaining a presence and staying active in a community, particularly online. They've really thought outside the box. There's a Veterans Art Program going on online. I could go on and on. I would just recommend folks go to the website, and more than likely, there's going to be something going on the day you look at it, because they are really active and doing a great job. They, we are taking, they're on the verge of taking possession of the Sutter Theater. So the two agencies are folding, melding into one. And it's not a sale. They are giving the Sutter Theater to Yuba Sutter Arts and Culture at no cost. And as a matter of fact, they're also going to get an estimate of $50,000 from a previous asset they're going to sell, and then to give it to Yuba Sutter Arts, to kind of kick-start the program. So a lot of exciting things happening there. Hopefully, we can start seeing some conspicuous changes and improvements going on out in front of the Sutter Theater, because it's really is a, a great opportunity for, for some culture, folks to express themselves here in Yuba Sutter. And that is it for my stuff. Want to say welcome to our new city manager. Very welcome, and also happy birthday to our new city manager. Thank you very much, Dave. I didn't realize that. That's the, I'm not a Facebook person, but thanks to Facebook, I knew to, to say that. Anyway, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kirchner.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
I'd like to start by welcoming our new planning commission. Folks that were nominated tonight, congratulations. Look forward to working with you in the future. Busy last couple of weeks, met with the new city manager. And once again, welcome, Dave. Expecting great things. No new business, no committee meetings. There was some training, online training to, to take a look at. I am happy to report that the Yuba Sutter Gold Sox, they're selling season tickets. So they're looking at moving forward with their season. And this weekend, I worked with my favorite organization, Saylove, down at the river bottoms over in Marysville. It's amazing to see our community get together like that. Just, just the amount of resources brought together, and folks that work, just boots on the ground, hard, hard work. Believe me, I was filling it the next day, to hopefully make an impact and make our community a better place. And that's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Vice Minister Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To our city manager, welcome again, and happy birthday. I will not ask which one this is, but happy birthday. Oh, you're not, you're not even the speed limit sign yet. You're good, sir. All right. As Councilmember Harris talked about, we had the Transit Authority meeting a couple of weeks ago. As I chaired that, I appointed a ad hoc committee, and I'm looking forward to the results. Because we had two properties on the Yuba County side, one property on the Sutter County side. And so I appointed two from each side to look at it really independently, to see what's best for both of our communities. And looking forward to that report coming out, because every property they have to look at has its challenges. So, so I'm looking forward to that. GSEC, got upcoming meetings with GSEC, and looking to expand there. And I'm sure all you guys saw the reaction from GSEC today about supporting Major League Soccer, because that got pulled out of the region. So they're, they're looking to step in there. EDC will be coming up in the next couple of weeks as well. And love working with the two of them to see how we can better this community and bring growth here in the opportunities. To Sir Optimus, thank you, guys. Congratulations on 100 years, because, thank you for the pin. None of you looked a day over 100, I tell you, because it's amazing, they were all here, I guess, in 1921, and here tonight. But great organization, you guys do an awful lot for this community. So, Sir Optimus, thank you. I want to focus on one thing real quick and say thank you to all of our Yuba City staff. Because everyone that is employed by the city, we have been on this journey now in this thing called COVID for a year. And you hear it in the news, everybody's coming up on COVID fatigue. We're all tired of this crap. Just call it what it is. We're tired of everything that goes with it. And I just want to say thank you to our team. Mr. City Manager, our former interim city manager, Ms. Langley. During the past year, you guys have done, pardon the French, a hell of a job in supporting everybody in this community, keeping this community open. Because we'll call it what it is, we have the guidelines we have to kind of work around, but we've been open. And some sort of normalcy, and I really do appreciate that. And it does not go unnoticed by, I know, any of the five of us up here. So, you know, you guys have kept City Hall going. We opened these chambers many, many, many months ago, and have always invited the public in. And we've tried to do what's right. So thank you. Please extend the thanks all the way down. And to our city attorney, look over there, and he's nodding. That's like, don't forget me, bud. I get it. You have guided us this last year with the legalese of how we can weave and bob through everything that's been going on. But I appreciate the guidance. Chief and chief, you guys have done a great job as well. So kind of making the room there. But together, we have actually made a difference, and I just want to stop for a minute and say thank you. say thank you. So, the last thing that I have is, we are still trudging forward with the Bogstewart Master Tax Exchange Agreement. Hopefully, we will eventually reach an end to that. You know, it's had documents drawn up. I know it's with the county, and we're getting feedback from them, and I sincerely hope that we can come to an agreement here very shortly and get this behind us, because it's what's, you know, it's another part of Yuba City's, you know, future and our history, because it will be our history soon. It's been on the books for a long time. It's a great opportunity, and I look forward very much to the day that we can all come before these chambers and get something finally approved. So, that's what the last couple of weeks have looked like, Mr. Mayor, and thank you.
Thank you. I did not have any outside committee assignments, and I was actually in the state of Kansas, where it was freezing cold, watching my twin boys play college baseball. I think I probably would have preferred to be in a meeting here in California than than suffering through that. I did find out something that probably you all know, but there are actually heated jackets that one can get, you know, not necessary here in California. First and foremost, I want to thank the public for being here tonight. You know, it's it's good to see some people here in the audience. For quite a long time, even though we were open, it was, it was, didn't have a lot of folks, and, you know, it's good to have the public interaction. That's what this is all about. So, thank you all who took the time to come out here tonight. Just to to add on to the Vice Mayor's discussion on the Master Tax Exchange Agreement, we do have, this thing continues, trudge is a good word, you know, everybody's trying to do their due diligence to make the best agreement, but it is, it is time to get this thing taken care of in the best interests of the county and the city, and we're looking forward to our our peers over there in the in Sutter County to to get together with us here shortly and and put that thing to bed. I do want to, again, and only do this briefly, but it's it's interesting to see Diana sitting on the audience. I'm used to looking over here, and now I got to look at Dave, but.
Did she get any further away?
Yeah.
I don't think there's a chair behind there.
No, but again, yeah. But thank you for your service to us, and thank you for assisting in the transition. I know that it's been very meaningful and helpful as Mr. Vaughn has assumed his duties. Happy birthday, sir. Welcome to your to your seat up there in the upper level, and I look forward to continuing to work with you. I want to acknowledge three outgoing planning commissioners, Daria Ali, who served two terms with us, Jana Shannon, who served two terms with us, and Dale Eiler, and we'll be we'll be setting forth an acknowledgement of their service to the city, so I want to thank them for their service. In this evening, I would like to close in remembrance of John Tiscano. John Tiscano has been a longtime friend of the city. I found out today doing a little research. He even got a key to the city. I didn't even know we gave those things out, but John, John was instrumental in the Sutter Theater, but also in a lot of other projects downtown, and, you know, he will, he will definitely be missed. He was somebody that I know through my past fire experience, he wasn't always the easiest to deal with, but he was fair, and he was a good man, and he will be missed as far as the city, the city goes. Anyway, with that, again, thank you all for being here tonight. If you're watching us on TV or on video, thank you for participating, and we will adjourn. Thank you.